Good morning, I'll officially call to order our regular meeting of CVWD Board of Directors, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Aaron Coachella, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne. Especially the Dodgers.
Where's the blue and white flag?
I know, it's kind of hard to pick out the Toronto fans because they're all wearing the same colors.
I know, right?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, roll call, please.
Good, let me make sure we're on. Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments for today's agenda?
No, sir.
No. Is there anybody wishing, from the public, wishing to comment at this time?
Mr. President, we don't have anybody in the audience regarding general comment, Mr. Smith, I assume regarding seven B as well. Okay, thank you. But we did receive a letter of general public comment yesterday, which was emailed to the board and also distributed to you at the dais as well for general comment.
Yes, yeah, I received that, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, on to the consent calendar, items five A through K. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass by vote. Action. Seven A. This is one of the items that we received comment on yesterday.
Yeah, and I don't know, I think, I don't know if I am for Jim and/or Jim, and then I believe, let me double check, Joe Shu was supposed to join us online. I don't see him online yet. But essentially, we received a request asking for a board appointment to the Salt Sea Conservancy Board. It does require a formal action by the board, therefore, we have it before you for the board to make a selection and appoint someone or approve someone to be on that board.
Okay. And do we have a board member in mind, or what is the plan?
Mr. President and members of the board, I would like to nominate for appointment to the Conservancy Vice President Estrada.
All right, is that good? I'll, I'll.
You want that?
Well, I've been, I've been on there for.
This is her baby.
Well, we fought to be included in the Conservancy, that was a big push, and so I think it's appropriate that.
I'll second that. For nomination. I do appreciate your willingness to serve because it's extra work.
Well, we'll see what, we'll see what happens, maybe there's a trade off here pretty soon, but. I think we got to keep tabs on it, there's somewhere to be done.
I agree, I agree too. No, you fought pretty hard for that. All right, so we have a motion in a second.
I do have Joe on the line now, I don't know if Joe has any comments or any questions or anything that you'd like to add, Joe?
He's a man of few words.
Potentially muted?
He is. Hi, hey, Joe, this is Sylvia, just wondering if you had any comments or any questions or anything you'd like to provide to the board before they take action on the appointment of a CVWD representative to the Salt Sea Conservancy Board? And you are muted.
Was it star six, or?
No, he's on Zoom, so it's just.
It's not going to change the, I don't think it's going to change what we do.
It's not going to change it. Yeah, I, you know, I support Casolo too, I think that, you know, the main drivers of the legislation were to put a conservancy together to, their main function is to do the O and M on projects out in the sea and kind of oversee what the state's doing and probably rally for more money and budgets and things like that, and I think that falls within your wheelhouse very well, Casolo, I think you'll do a great job.
Yeah, and getting us a local voice.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, so why don't we vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass by vote. Thank you. Seven B, this is the reconsideration of the waiver. Hi, Carrie.
Good morning. Okay, so the subject waiver was previously rejected by the board on August twelfth, twenty twenty five. The background information in the staff report has not changed, but I would like to emphasize the following points. The capacity in the Varnar Road sewer system is insufficient without improvements, and the developer has had years to plan for these improvements. Since two thousand and seventeen, sewer modeling has identified necessary infrastructure improvements, and the developer has been made aware of these requirements. Polte Homes relieved Monterey Crossing, who's the developer, of a major financial obligation by constructing the first required sewer segment. However, the remaining improvements have always been a known requirement for the project completion. We've completed multiple analyses, all of them reaching the same conclusion, offsite improvements are necessary. The most recent modeling analysis was in October of two thousand and twenty four, January of two thousand and twenty five, and February of two thousand and twenty five. They all reaffirmed that the Varnar Road sewer pipelines have no available capacity. In the developer's May nineteenth waiver request letter, they indicated they were approved for a hundred and sixteen equivalent dwelling units, or EDUs, in phase one. And that a coffee shop is part of that one hundred and sixteen. I reviewed the businesses that are part of phase one and the number of EDUs that we've assigned to the businesses. There's a Chick-fil-A, a five-unit strip mall, a Spectrum, a Habit Burger, and a Quick Quack Car Wash. All of these businesses collectively were assigned approximately sixty-four EDUs. However, after looking at the actual water usage, the car wash is using on average approximately a hundred EDUs. In fact, in August of two thousand and twenty four, the water usage for that month alone was a hundred and thirty-four EDUs. So if you look at the true number of assigned EDUs, it's closer to a hundred and thirty, which exceeds the previously approved a hundred and sixteen EDUs, and further exacerbates the capacity issue for the Varnar Road sewer system. My second point is CVWD must maintain a fair and consistent enforcement of its policies and procedures. Granting this waiver sets a risky precedence as it encourages similar requests from other developers facing sewer improvement requirements, and it weakens staff's ability to enforce necessary infrastructure upgrades. Granting this waiver also creates public and environmental risks. By ignoring capacity constraints, it could result in system overflows, which pose health, environmental, and regulatory compliance risks. CVWD has established design criteria, and in this instance, it's a diameter-to-depth ratio, little d over big D, for a reason, and this is to ensure that the sewer system functions properly. The Monterey Crossings project is creating a d over d ratio that exceeds CVWD's criteria. So in conclusion, CVWD staff recommends that the board deny the subject waiver request as there is no available sewer capacity. Granting the waiver would create risks, set a dangerous precedent, undermine CVWD's planning and design standards, and places an unfair burden on future developments and ratepayers. The appropriate path forward is for the developer to participate in the coordinated cost-sharing arrangement with other developers to ensure a properly functioning sewer system for the entire community rather than seeking an exception that jeopardizes the reliability of the Varnar Road sewer system.
Thank you, Carrie. I have a question, a couple of questions, actually. One of them is fortunately, we don't have a lot of experience with sanitary sewer overflows, but maybe we have a little bit of experience with that. They're not good. What happens if we have essentially the predicted outcome here, which would be a sanitary sewer overflow, if we continue to overburden this line? And who's responsible for whatever penalties and remediation is required in the event that this occurs?
CVWD, because it's our sewer system, and so if there's a sewer spill, there's different categories, but if it's large enough and we have to report it, then there could be significant fines.
We would be fined by the Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Correct.
Which is state agency.
I wanted to follow up on that.
Could I, continue? So the applicant or anybody in this project, have they offered to indemnify us in that event? And I know they probably could maybe indemnify us on the money side, but they really wouldn't be able to indemnify us on the reputation side.
Correct.
Because that would be damaged regardless.
Correct.
But have they offered to indemnify us?
No.
No, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just for context of the visual of an overflow and the capacity in the pipe, and when you talked about how full the pipe is, per the design manual, how, how empty should that pipe be?
Well, our design criteria allows it to get up to two-thirds full, and it's.
So it's two-thirds full, okay. So it's not full-full, and that's for a reason, right? You allow for some.
That's correct, that's because of these types of issues where somebody's using more than we anticipated, or in the event of a storm, as we all know, that Varnar Road corridor has gotten flooded time and time again, and the sewer manholes are not leak-proof or tight, you know, and so water infiltration gets into the storm, or into the sewer system when there are storms. And so for these peak events, for these storm events, that is why we have the buffer of the extra one-third in the pipe.
Sure, okay, so you have the extra one-third, and in the model, you're showing it's right there at the one.
We're showing that it's slightly above.
Slightly above, and so when we think about, when we think about however many EDUs they want to add, what would you say is the percentage overage that, is it over by?
Well, it are.
I mean, I'm trying to get a visual of the perceived impact that.
Well, it's in the staff report. Our criteria is point six-seven, and currently, the model is showing point six-eight to point seven-oh for various segments of the existing pipeline.
And that's before?
That's before any additional.
That's before, and then with them, did you put that, I don't know.
No.
No, do you have a sense of that?
It, that's with them, the point six-eight, point seven.
Yeah, point six-eight with them, right, so, I mean, I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, I get that.
I mean, that there's one, it's a big.
But we've had, we've had issues with the other Dutch Brothers that using much more than what was.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying it out loud just so we get a visual of, you know, the idea that it's exceeding to one scenario when it's point nine or point nine-nine, and the one scenario when it's point six-eight. So I think, I think that matters for context.
Right, appreciate that. Okay, so I know we have, probably have some public comment here.
We do, I will go through the cards, but just for the record, we did receive a public comment letter on seven B, which was emailed to the board, also distributed to you at the dais, and we did receive a handout from the applicant vendor, I mean consultant on the group, so which the board received yesterday and as well as a copy at the dais, and I will start with the cards in the order received. The first speaker we have is Joaquin Tijerina.
Good morning, Mr. President Powell and the members of the board, Joaquin Tijerina with Riverside County Office of Economic Development, again here thanking you for the reconsideration of the project. We feel it's important to have the developer, have them come with the information, the technical information to help make the decision. We feel that there is a possibility that this will enhance what the services that are in the area. And really, we, again, just thank you for reconsidering the waiver.
Thank you, Joaquin.
Speaker number two, we have Vanessa, is it Mager?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, President and board members. My name is Vanessa Mager with the City of Palm Desert. We are here on behalf of letting you folks know that we have partnered with Fountainhead through the decade to entitle this entire project on Monterey Dinosaur, which is also known as the Monterey Crossing. The center has created both jobs and amenities that benefit the residents and our visitors here in the Coachella Valley. We are in support of the temporary waiver to allow Dutch Brothers to move forward with their new development, and we are continuing to collaborate with Fountainhead to identify options that will assist current and future businesses to expand sewer and water capability within our city and at that location as well. Obviously, economic development is something that we want to continue to pursue and move forward. We do understand that the infrastructure that we have currently in our Coachella Valley, Coachella Valley is starting to take a hit a little bit, so we want to continue to work with you as well as the other agencies in order to sure, ensure there's capacity so we can continue to provide the quality of life for our residents and again, for the visitors that visit us. Thank you for your time, and if there's anything else you need from us, please let us know.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Aaron Tofani.
Thank you, I have other pronounced too, if anybody wants one.
Is it different than what was distributed?
No, it's the same. Okay, good, just making sure. Go ahead and start, are you done? Okay, thank you, board, for hearing our request again today. As you know, you're pretty familiar with the project, I don't think I need to go into great detail of all the work we've done over the last, you know, almost eight years. Just one clarification, we didn't know there was a capacity issue back in two thousand and seventeen. It wasn't until October of two thousand and twenty four when we found out about the issue, and we've been jumped into action ever since, and just kind of, just wanted to clarify that one thing. As soon as we found out, we engaged with staff, been very helpful to guide us in the right direction. The key here is making the big significant installation of the new system. That's like the big takeaway with this whole project and how this fits into that project. I just wanted to make sure we're all aware, and you know, there's the incremental risk. I think the benefits outweigh the incremental risk because it being at the point six-seven, point six-eight, the two EDUs which we can demonstrate the new systems that Dutch Brothers has that limits water usage, and also the way of viewing the bills where they're selling a tremendous amount of drinks, and a lot of that water usage is going out of the door as all the drinks, that's what they sell. Coffee is made of water, all the ice, everything, so there's a significant amount, and then there's only one employee restroom, that's all. The amount of solids going down is minimal. Any flows that are going into it are helping to clear the system, and so there's, there is capacity for it, there is some room, and the risks are minimal considering this. There's a hotel in our project also that's fully permitted and ready to move forward, but we're not here seeking a waiver for that because we understand that that would put an unsustainable risk or a burden onto the system, so we're only asking for what we need, and the reason being too, we have a commercial lease with the tenant, and if we don't get them going and under construction, we miss our delivery window, and there is, it puts the deal at jeopardy. And as you know, there's headwinds in the economy, and if things continue, there's, it just puts that Dutch Brothers deal at risk. If that Dutch Brothers deal goes at risk, it limits, it hurts our ability to make the greater improvements. So we're fine with some of the conditions of having a deposit, absolutely understand it. And the key takeaway too, I just want to say, we've demonstrated the fact that we are moving forward in good faith. We have engaged the consultant to prepare our plans. We had our first meeting with staff two weeks ago to review those plans prior to submittal, and we expect our formal submittal to be in by the end of this week. We're moving forward, and we're spending a great deal of money to design the entire nine thousand lineal foot area that needs to be improved, all at our cost, even though our requirement is much less. So we're putting in a tremendous amount of effort and just seek this, to ensure that we can complete this, to seek this one waiver because we're doing the unique, we're designing and going to install the system, we'll put up a deposit, anything, but it just helps our ability to ensure that this gets, that the bigger picture gets completed with this waiver, and we really appreciate your time and consideration and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Thank you. Sure.
So I mentioned this last time, so because the plans are moving along really quite well and are either in or about to be submitted, and assuming there could be a quick turnaround on those, couldn't you just, and this is kind of outside my wheelhouse, but I'm just going to suggest, couldn't you just do an extension for the occupancy date for the tenant and somehow pay them some sort of incentive until, until the improvements are complete? I mean, I've developed properties.
Yeah.
I've done that, these things happen. Is that?
Yeah, that's, currently, we are already budget constrained on this, so to be able to basically pay to have it extended, that's not really something, we're already kind of constrained with that, with all the improvements that we're making and all the time delays that we've had, so. You know, that's not really an option at this time, unfortunately. You know, the idea is that if we have the green light to connect them, by the time they're built, we'll almost be done with, we're not putting the system for a risk for a long period of time. The issue is if we don't have the approval to go forward, the commencement of their work can be pushed back. You know, it could take a year for us to be ready to go, and it could, right? So it's like asking them to wait around a certain amount of time, you know, it's, it does put the deal at risk, and the corporate tenants typically don't, they leave the termination rights in there, you know, typically, so we haven't, we haven't been able to solve this problem that way. So we're trying to march forward and get it, get them online because they're part of our first phase. It's ready to go, the pad's been done, and that's kind of, everyone's expectations were a lot different previously, and they're already been pushed back times, so it's.
I get it, thank you for responding.
Okay, yeah.
Just one quick, quick question.
Yeah.
Aaron, now you mentioned this last time, but your expectation is if you were to get a green light, that the Dutch Brothers would be open when?
They're probably open by summer time, I'm guessing.
Summer, and then, and then based on what you're hearing, the expectation of when you would have the improvements complete, would be when?
By the end of next year would be a good reasonable goal. I mean, we'd love to have it done faster, but we have to go through a bidding process.
So you, with that in mind, you're anticipating that the overlap is like six months?
Yeah, that's at a, you know, it could be less, it could be more, but just if I had to just guess.
Sure.
Without, and I could provide a follow-up answer and look at it.
I just, yeah, just, I think that's fair enough.
For round numbers sake.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, so I hate asking a question when I don't know the answer. Have you gone to the other existing businesses and asked them to reduce their water use? And in particular, the car wash, which sounds like they're using, I don't know why, I'm guessing the business has been good, but they're using more than what they originally projected. Isn't there some way, I mean, if you're all working together, isn't there some way to, have you gone to them?
Yeah, it's, you know, we've analyzed what they do use and what we see, you know, also from, not a hundred percent of the water they use goes into the system. And if you look at the photos, and we did an investigation, look at the site, look, make sure there's no leaks and doing everything, so we did address that. Their, their, the water filtration system is working, so they are reusing some water. But the key thing is a lot of that water, if you look at the pictures and you watch the car wash, a lot of it is dripping off and going into the driveway where people are drying their cars. And so it's not all going into the sewer as you would think, and then also, one key thing is too, storms are the risk, right, when there's rain and stuff to the system. Well, the car washes don't operate whenever there's rain, and so they don't, they're not even open, they're closed, so it kind of offsets that, so whenever it's raining and there's potentially more water coming in from outside rain sources, the car washes aren't working, and not just this one, but all the car washes in this tributary area are not operating. But in terms of going to them, and we have troubleshoot ways to see how they could use less water, and there, there's, other than, we did an inspection, and they're, you know, got a couple of little things here and there.
You haven't asked them to reduce their hours or anything like that?
Oh, yeah, we can't, we have no, yeah, we can't ask them to reduce their hours. It's not, I mean, I didn't, I just have never, that's their business, and we have no contractual, they have no contractual obligations to.
No, thank you, you answered my question.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
I mean, that brings up a good point in terms of water and not going into the system. Carrie, how do we, how do we measure the flow to get that six-seven? Is that based on the amount of water that goes through the meters into the business? Or is there some other way that we're actually measuring that flow?
So the point six-seven or analyzing that to determine the point six-eight, that's done through our hydraulic model. So it's taking into account flow meters that have been set up, and when the, when the system, when the model was, or the software was calibrated. And then you just add the various projects loading to the model to come up with that. When we calculate what we think the impact is on the system, we're looking, we're not just looking at a hundred percent water usage, we're applying a return to sewer factor, so.
So it's not a hundred percent?
Right, so we, when we, when we bill or the sewer, we base it on equivalent sewer units, ESUs, and those are eighty percent of an EDU, and I just looked that number up yesterday, and we were at eighty ESUs, which is equivalent to ninety-six EDUs. So again, it's close, it's close to a hundred, and that's, that's an annual rolling average because the ESUs are based on a three-year average, and so that's taking into account, you know, peak months, low months, blah, 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 but on average, that's, that's what the car wash is using.
Thank you.
Carrie, I have a question while you're up there. So my bigger issue is around the exception and the precedent associated with that. Can you talk for a moment about our history of granting exceptions and waivers in this kind of an instance?
I'm not aware of any exceptions or waivers that we've granted in a situation like this where we're putting a sewer system or say, a water system at risk.
If I may, there is no process in the design manual or rules and breaks to appeal to the board for a waiver at all, so this would be unique in territory.
Okay, any other speakers?
We still have you. Vasanti Okuma, please.
Good morning, board members, thank you. Yeah, so a lot of data was thrown out there, and I wanted to just kind of back up a little bit and provide a little background on this project, how we got to where we are today. Originally, in February two thousand and eighteen, when we split this project into two phases, we had phase one and phase two, and you know, the EDUs were calculated for, you know, what we were expecting to build on this project. In November two thousand and twenty-one, we completed all of phase one except for the Dutch Brothers. And at that time, in February two thousand and eighteen, as Carrie mentioned, there was, Polte Homes was going. And at that time, um, in February twenty eighteen, um, as Carrie mentioned, there was, uh, Pulte Homes was going in, they were way ahead of us. We were still kind of trying to lease out our site, working on, you know, LOIs and leases. Um, and Pulte, they were ready to construct, so they went ahead and constructed the fifteen, I think it was approximately fifteen hundred lineal feet of sewer. And that pipe was meant to have sufficient capacity, not only for our phase one, also for our phase two and for Pulte. And that's how the modeling was done. Fast forward, um, to November twenty twenty-one, um, we completed our project. And then in twenty twenty-four, um, we're, the leasing on phase two was kind of going slow. There was COVID in the middle of all that and as everyone knows, that just delayed a lot of things. So anyway, fast forward to twenty twenty-four and, um, in January, the city sent a letter. Because the hotel was going through their planning applications, sent a letter to CBWD, uh, which is, they send it to all the agencies saying, we're processing this planning application, blah, blah, blah. And, uh, CBWD sent back a letter to the city of Palm Desert and it basically was a boilerplate letter saying, um, you know. Yeah, downstream improvements or additional facilities may be required. Uh, there's no requirement for additional hydraulic modeling. No red flag really, uh, at that point of, hey, there's a constriction here on Warner Road. So the hotel went about their merry way, um, they were communicating with staff about site plans and things like that. Again, nothing came up until July, when they actually submitted for plan check and then, uh, they were asked to do a hydraulic model for the hotel. And then in October, that model was completed and here we are, right? So as soon as we found out, you know, we pulled out all the stops, we got this consortium together and, you know. And we, as Aaron said, we've been working really hard on that. The modeling that was completed for phase one included the Dutch Brothers, so the assumption was that the Dutch Brothers was already built, even though it wasn't. And forty point four five EDUs was allocated for the Dutch Brothers. Now that forty-five point four five EDUs, sorry, I think I said forty-five, it's point four five EDUs. Came right out of the CBWD development design manual. It's based on a restaurant use with eight seats outside. That's what the La Quinta, uh, location has, eight seats outside. It's right out of table A one of the CBWD design development manual. Now there were numbers thrown out at the last meeting that Dutch Brothers, because of their water consumption, is five EDUs. Well, I don't know where five EDUs is coming from because if you're talking about a coffee shop, which their main ingredient that they're selling is water. A fifty percent return to sewer is not, it's just not accurate. And in your packet, uh, you will see there's a table that shows exactly what fixtures are in the Dutch Brothers building. And their plumbing engineers calculated the amount of sewer that goes through those drainage fixtures into the sewer. And the worst case we can come up with, and this is according to the Uniform Plumbing Code, is two EDUs. So out of those two EDUs, point four five has already been allocated as having been built in the model, so just keep in mind, it's just something to think about. The Quick Quack, um, I'd like to address, we went through the entire year of bills from Quick Quack and yes.
I'm sorry, so we'll need to have you wrap up because you've gone over your time a lot.
All right. Sorry, because there was a lot of data that was thrown out, I needed to, I'd like to respond to some of those.
Jeff, isn't that up to John?
Yeah, no, I already. I already gave him the eye.
So just really quick on the Quick Quack, I mean, at the last meeting, it was ninety, I think it was mentioned that it was ninety EDUs, at today's meeting, it's a hundred and thirty EDUs. I mean, it's very hard to kind of wrap my head around where all these numbers are coming from, because when we look at the data, the water, actual water bills for the whole year. We can see maybe they're using twice as much. There are a couple of months where it's three times as much, but I don't see the hundred and thirty EDUs. And as Aaron's already said, a lot of it's dripping off the cars, it's water, so it's actually not even solids, so it actually helps the system downstream. The other point I wanted to make is, um, Blue Palm Desert is already building four hundred and fifty-one, I think it's roughly four hundred and fifty lineal feet, uh, west of Cook. That's going to alleviate a major construction in the system. So that's just going to provide a lot more additional capacity. So I think the model is overly conservative. One point five EDUs, as we have calculated, is not going to overburden the system. So just something to keep in mind, you know, just practicality. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, um, I apologize if I misspell the last name, John Caglia?
Morning, I'm, uh, my name is John Caglia, I'm actually with Dutch Bros. Um, it's kind of interesting to hear some numbers thrown around, but what I can tell you this is. Dutch Bros is a, what we call a zero sum game, which means if someone's not coming to us to go to Starbucks. So we would add no capacity, we would actually lower capacity because we are found to be two thirds more efficient with our water than Starbucks due to the fact that we have no dine in. We have no public restrooms, it's only drive through and pickup windows only. What I'm hearing capacity or EDUs, you know, I I build stores all over the nation, so I hear a lot of this stuff. What I find with other departments, if someone's using more water than allowed, the department goes at ten and shuts their water off if they don't comply. If there's a car wash using more EDUs than projected, I would say you need to go to the car wash and not tell other businesses.
That's not why we're here.
No, I understand that. I understand that, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, we are not adding any capacity.
I mean, if the city of Palm Desert wants to go shut down the car wash, that's up to them.
Well, I understand that, but Coachella Valley is a separate entity from them, but.
We have no police power.
Okay, well, I I'm sorry for that, but like I said, in the in the business of things, we will not be adding any capacity, we'll be actually reducing capacity. The store, I do have a La Quinta, there was a discussion about high wire usage there. I did look at the wire bills for that store and I did go and we modified some things on that store to lower that. They did have three dipper wells in that store when I normally have one in this store. Now we removed those and we reduced our wire use by three hundred gallons per day for that store by just eliminating those dipper wells. So we do want to be a good partner to the city, um, but like I said, the landlord has said that they do have certain lease obligations to me to get the store open in a certain time. And we do have rights to either terminate the lease or not terminate the lease based on that, but, um, everything I'm hearing. Based on the beautiful lady here that said about usage, we will add no net increase to the sewer usage because we are a zero sum business. Either they're going to me or they're going to Starbucks and, you know, added capacity will not be added because of our use. So if anything, it will be lower because of how efficient we are. So, any questions?
No.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next speaker I have is Craig Smith, please. And then after that, I have John Rodriguez, just so you're ready.
I wanted to hear.
Thank you very much, President Powell and the board. It's nice to be with you this morning. My name is John Rodriguez. I represent High Tech Engineering. We working with, uh, Dutch Brothers and Fountainhead on this project, but more importantly, we're working on the. Plans for the expansion to the sewer on Varner Road. Currently, we're developing or designing the plans for about nine thousand feet. Of sewer that's going to be improved along Varner Road that will ultimately, uh, you know, cure this whole situation that we have in this tributary area that goes to Varner Road. So, um, that's the big picture right now. We're ready for plan check here soon, so we'll be getting that in front of the district, uh, for approval. To deal directly with what we're talking about with Dutch Brothers, um, the deficient areas that are marked on our plans, specifically that. To the west of Cook Street and Varner Road intersection is being currently constructed by, uh, and and. Will no long, will no doubt be in service by the time Dutch Brothers would be connecting. We are hoping that even the portion that is going to be designed or developed and constructed by the consortium. Will be under construction by the time that Dutch Brothers comes on board as well, um, if we can get that to that point. So that's just a couple things that we're looking at as far as timelines go and getting some relief to this system. We understand that there's a, there is a burden and and the EDUs are are stacking up, uh, to this deficient area, but. Um, when we construct, or when we estimated the EDUs for, uh, Dutch Brothers, it was based on a a single, uh, employee bathroom. And of course, then also the drainage that goes through the through the cleaning systems. So, uh, we worked with the previous Development Services Director to come up with that, um, and we came up with at that time, point four seven EDUs. I think we've talked as much as five EDUs, um, which is actually what's on their modeling letter. Those five EDUs that were allocated were not only for Dutch Brothers, but they were for two other businesses as well. So I would say at a maximum, we're talking five EDUs, uh, in this case, but more realistically, we're we're probably around two. Two EDUs in a deficient area that we're talking about right now, um, does not put us that much over the point six, seven, which is, which is the median. D over D calculation. So right now, we are, we feel like the Dutch Brothers. Addition to this deficient area would be very minimal and would allow our our developer to move forward with their tenant. So any questions, technical questions, I'm here to answer, but thank you so much for your time this morning.
Thank you.
And then Craig Smith.
Morning, board, thank you. This is very important for several reasons. As mentioned, the Dutch Brothers is a commercial lease with an outside delivery date which will expire if we wait until the expansion is completed. The waiver requested is very small. It's temporary and doesn't pose a threat, a risk, excuse me, to the system. This is the equivalent of two EDUs. The approval of Dutch Brothers moving forward is an important part of financing the expansion of the greater system. During the last board meeting, the board had questions about a deposit that would demonstrate our commitment towards completing the larger expansion. In good faith, we've almost completed the plans for the entire ninety-four hundred linear feet, which will be permitted at our cost. Our consortium is required to build five thousand of that, so we're we're cooling the plans for, you know, this much and we're we're going to utilize this much. But this is our requirement. However, our efforts will allow future developers to come in and build their individual sections without any lag time for design and permitting. Benefiting CBWD in the long run. In addition, we're willing to put up a ten percent deposit of of our share. Of the five thousand one hundred and forty sewer, uh, foot sewer improvement. Please keep in mind that on a weekly basis, we are currently funding the expansion as agreed with the consortium. We've put together with a hundred percent of the funds needed to be invested prior to the start of construction. So we've been writing checks, right? We did the survey, we've done the plans, plans are going in shortly. In addition to offering our deposit, we're writing checks, nonstop to get to get, you know, we have a foot on the gas, we're going to do it as fast as we can. And we are, uh, as John said, the plans will be in shortly, probably this week, okay? And thank you for listening to us and making this request for a temporary waiver.
Thank you.
And that is all the speaker cards I have unless we have anyone else in the audience?
Okay. You know, you know, guys, I get it. I mean, I I get it and you guys have worked so hard. I mean, I appreciate the county coming here. I appreciate the Palm Desert coming here. I don't know more, what more to do. I know you guys have spent a lot of time on this. You guys are the lead on gathering all these people together to get this problem fixed. I get it, it's 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 a coffee shop. I I I frequent there myself, to different places. I don't see a lot of people getting coffee and going to the, using the restroom. I think you're, I don't, I don't think there's a lot of sewer. I I I get it, I just. You know, I was hoping that there was going to be a crack with Carrie a little bit on on allowing just something to give. And I just don't think you're going to get, um, I think, I just don't think you're going to get three votes. I just, I don't, I don't think so.
Oh, I I hope you're wrong, uh, but, because I feel the same way. I, you know, I think you've you've put a lot of effort into this. I think you've done a lot that's going to benefit this this area here, you know, you've you've taken a lead role and. I think resolving an issue that's a bigger issue than just your issue, a lot of other folks are going to benefit from what you're doing. Uh, I don't think the two EDUs is a significant concern, at least for me. And, um. You know, I I think you've you've done a lot of work in this valley. You've probably been around for a lot, a lot of years. Haven't heard anything negative about type of work that you do. I think, you know, you're working in good faith. I'd just say that in general, for me, it seems like the positives outweigh whatever the concerns are and I do believe that you're moving pretty quickly. I see the the overlap kind of being small. But, um. Yeah, I. That's kind of my my comments. I I I hope that it works out.
Yeah, there, this is a unique circumstances and I think that staff has put some, you know, that some safeguards in there on on if we do. You know. Approve this request. I don't know if the rest of you guys have read what what staff would like to to include in. Oh, yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, I mean, honestly, uh, I do appreciate the effort, the, I did, I was hoping to come in here and hear some things I did not hear. I didn't hear how you guys were going to solve the math problem. And I think your problem is more, uh, with the car wash than it is with us. And, uh, that wasn't addressed. I think that our problem is that we're asking staff to do a job and then we're going to. Not support them if we grant this waiver and that, to me, is a big deal. I think we need to be supportive of our staff. And, uh, I also think that, you know, you're probably going to be successful regardless. Maybe this isn't the way you wanted it to go. I mean, who knows what the vote's going to be, but but if you don't get the waiver, you know, you'll you'll find a way. But, uh, we would be flying completely naked on the San Sotteri sewer overflow problem, which is a big deal for us. We don't want that. Um, and as a board member. With some responsibility to the larger community, I don't want to be the one that votes to ignore our existing guidelines. In order to leapfrog ahead of this project, you know, the the sewer project completion. In, in, you know, I, that's where I am. I don't know, any other comments? No?
And just for the record, I I don't know if I mentioned this earlier, but we did receive a, um, a written public comment as well, so.
Very prolific commenter. Good, and by the way, very good commenter too. I appreciate the comments. On all three items. So, uh, so at this point, we, I would entertain a motion on this matter.
I'm going to move that we grant the waiver.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion before we vote? No? All right, then all in favor say aye.
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 And no, all, no?
No.
No, so that fails two to three.
So the request is for the waiver, the motion was to approve it, it was voted down, so the waiver request has been rejected.
Right, sorry, guys. Okay, we're going to move on.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Takes us to seven C, which is this task order for the Thousand Palms flood control. Morning, David.
Good morning. The purpose of this item is to authorize the General Manager to execute Task Order Number Two with Engineering Consultant WSP USA in the amount of one hundred sixty two thousand, seven hundred eighty six dollars for additional engineering services for the Thousand Palms flood control project. The total cost of the request, which includes engineering, project management, and contingency, is one hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred eighty six dollars. As you know, we phased the project out. There's been some work out in the Aquashore area, Classic Club, where we need to address some of the topography to align the design with some of the grading that occurred with the construction for the Aquashore. In addition to that, ID has installed some infrastructure that we need to address. And then lastly, the county has requested some realignment of the geometry for Avenue thirty eight out in that area. This request covers that as well. The, the subject here shows two hundred thousand dollar total cost. And I apologize, that's actually a typo. The total request here is one hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred eighty six dollars. And this is within the current capital improvement budget. So no budget amendment is required. And I'll leave it at that, take any questions.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, I'll move approval. I'll second.
Good, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed by vote. D. Approved solicitation of bids for the rehab and upgrade of pump stations. Sabrina, aye?
Good morning. Yeah, that's correct. Our request today is to approve solicitation of bids for Booster's Pump Station seventy one oh one, seventy one oh two, and seventy nine ninety. This is a USDA funded project. We have already obligated the funds. We estimate the project to have a total construction cost of six point nine million dollars. Two million dollars is budgeted for this current fiscal year. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I don't.
I would move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Hey, ask a question.
Passed by vote.
What's hot mineral spa?
It's an area, a community. So this.
It's a community?
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Hot mineral spa is a community? It is? I'm out there every day and I don't know that. I don't know where that is, okay?
They've never invited you over, apparently.
Have you been to the spa?
I don't know if they have a spa.
Well, they called the hot mineral spa. And you know about it, it must be populated.
I've heard of it.
Do you know where it is?
Is there, I don't know that there's an actual.
I thought that they did, but now you're questioning it and you've lived out here for a long time. So you're making me second guess it.
Hot, hot mineral spa. And it's in our jurisdiction. It's not on that map, though.
It is not. So these are just the locations.
It's not, it's not on that map.
Correct. The, these are just the booster station locations. The areas of which they serve are far, far to the east.
That's, that's closer than island.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, exactly.
Because I, I thought I had heard, the only time I heard about it.
There is, there is a place over there. I just, I didn't, I didn't know we were classifying as that.
Yeah, I heard of, because we had some issues during the storm up there with the wells going off or something. Okay.
But it's where, that's where the first H, that's where the first.
Scott has it, if anyone wants to know. It's in the, it's.
Now that we're talking about it, I know where the.
It's pretty far flung out there.
Yeah, it's where the first sillings, if that make, if that, it's important.
It's on the east side of the Salton Sea. Yeah.
Director Bianca is looking for tourist destination.
All right.
You want to book a treatment? All right, so we do, where are we on this? We already voted, we already voted.
It's a general, general question.
Thank you. Onward we go. So this is E, E, this is the one that was added to the agenda.
Hey, David.
David.
President Powell, members of the Board, thanks. Happy to finally be here with this item. I think we originally went for the application for this back in December twenty two. So this has been a long process to get us to here. But it was in addition to the agenda. We received the loan agreement this past week. Wanted to get that before the Board as quickly as possible prior to signing. Again, this is for the Warp Seven project, the SRF loan that we've been working on for this project. So it would authorize up to twenty six point nine million for SRF loan funds for this. Currently, we're under a win agreement that we're working on appropriation for, for another eight point five million to fully fund this project at the current amount of thirty five point four million. Happy to answer any other questions on this item as well.
Just, just for clarification, this is, so we're executing an install and sell agreement. What does that mean?
It's basically the state's name for a loan agreement. So that's what they're calling it. So for the closing resolution, that's the terminology they use. So it's authorizing the loan agreement.
What's the amount? You said thirty five?
It's a twenty six point nine million, up to twenty six point nine million. This is going to be similar to the other ones. So this is really three of the four agreements that we've had, starting with our seventeen eighteen SRF loan for the non potable projects, our twenty twenty one round that we did as well. We've received win funding, applications with all of these projects as well, which should total about twenty nine million in grant funding that's helping these projects. But the total price at this point, at least, are the amount we're receiving.
Is that two point one percent already locked in?
It is for this rate, yeah. So it was based on the application date. So the two point one percent rate for this would, basically, over the thirty years, it would result in about nine point five million in interest for that. And that is if we fully draw that. We'll still be working with the state to see if we can get any principal forgiveness for this loan amount as well.
And I know we've, we've heard about this project several times. But, and I know that one of the questions that's been asked is whether we have a home for all of this water, because we're making an investment. And I think, Armando, you said yes, right? And then you're adding more because of the connection to the farm? So we're not, not going to be a stranded asset, just pretty confident on that? Okay, thank you.
And really, the goal of this, right, is to utilize all of the capacity available at Warp Seven for recycled water. And so we don't have disposal issues and we have good water management.
Source substitution for Colorado.
Yep. I mean, it is so expensive to do this kind of stuff. But I, I think it's the, well, the way we need to go. I mean, we've been, this isn't the first project. We've got lots of them we've done over the years. It's just, it's just the number on how much it costs to do it is just getting so high. But we need to put all of our water to use.
Were we also expanding the capacity of the plant and then, and then treating that too, right? So we're, okay, so is that all part of this? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of item E seven.
I'll second.
Yeah, and just to point out, this is also one of the ones we received a letter on. The motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed by vote. Yeah, all right. And then, in Communications, I think that was just the one we received.
We did, we added, we received it after the publication of the package. So that was just here to the Board.
Is that something that gets posted at, are we going to post these comments to the website?
So they, they don't get posted, but they, they are added to the record. So if somebody requests it in, it's in our, our record system.
If they request that it be read, does just accepting it meet?
Yeah, we don't read. Some agencies read comments into the record and that would mean you'd have to read everything. And we don't do that. We just note that it's added into the record. And if a copy is requested, we make those, we make it available.
Okay. Thank you. Information presentation, we have a, let's see, Warp, Warp isn't the right, ERP. Erp, yeah, Erp, there we go. Erp presentation.
Erica, can you start the PowerPoint for her?
Good morning. Good morning, President Powell. Good morning, Directors of the Board. My name is Samantha Lopez and I am here to present the ERP and utility billing quarterly update implementation. So this is our program timeline. I won't spend a lot of time here. We've already gone over this at a couple of our updates. I will note that the Workday, HR, and financial implementation is being shifted from a go live July of twenty twenty six to closer to September of twenty twenty six. This change aligns with the Workday and Sprite Point deployments, allowing both systems to go live simultaneously and ensure a smoother data conversion process without having to build bridges between systems. The revised timeline is not updated in the presentation. We're still going over those dates and approvals. So this is another high level overview of our program timeline. This outlines the deployment phases. Each deployment phase includes a stabilization period where the vendors will assist with any needed adjustments. The Sprite Point implementation has a sixteen week stabilization period. The Workday Financial and HR has a twelve week stabilization period. And the Workday Adaptive Budget has a four week stabilization period. During.
Means that you're going to afford.
So when we go live, they're going to be on site for the first two weeks and then they're going to be available for twelve weeks or sixteen weeks, depending on what project it is, to handle any needed adjustments during the go live period. During the last quarter, our partner Barry Dunn completed various activities to help support the project's success. Both the Workday and Sprite Point projects are in the configuration and testing phases, and they are progressing on track. So the overall project is in green status. In the last update, issues were marked yellow due to pending decisions regarding the system of record. Those decisions have since been finalized and we are wrapping up the integration considerations. For this update, issues remain yellow due to the progress of Workday unit testing. The current volume of open items are quite large during this, or when we completed September. And that's what this presentation is based on. As of yesterday, testing was ninety two percent complete. The pencils down deadline for testing is Friday, October thirty first, with a resolution window through November eighth to address any outstanding items. So this timeline remains achievable. This slide highlights the Workday project milestones and deliverables. In the previous quarter, all project milestones were on track with a green status. This quarter, all areas remain green except for integrations, which are marked yellow. We currently have about seventy integrations in scope. We've been handling this in two different waves. So Wave One is twenty four integrations. All of those integrations have been signed off and they are on track. Wave Two is forty six integrations. Ten have been signed off and thirty six are pending final review. The yellow status reflects timing of sign offs, not delivery risk. Each integration has a clear plan and timeline to move to green by mid-November. Our teams continue to build, continue building testing in parallel, maintaining weekly checkpoints with vendors and business leads to track progress and mitigate any potential impacts. The overall integration work is progressing as planned with strong coordination, clear next steps, and confidence and readiness for end to end testing before December fifteenth. For the Workday project, over the last quarter, we continued the unit testing of the first build of the Workday environment. This phase provided staff valuable hands on experience to understand how current processes are going to be done in the new system. We used actual data from our legacy system, which allowed teams to test real scenarios and evaluate outcomes. Throughout the testing, several areas were identified that required additional configurations to meet the district's needs. Unit testing is wrapping up this week, marking an important milestone as we move closer to the next project phase. Now I will hand it over to my co-project manager, Matt Grigsby, to provide an update on the progress of the Sprite Point project.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
So could you take one integration as an example? List the problem that it had to make it yellow and how you resolved it?
One of the integrations would be our Fleeteo integration. So our, it's a Fleeteo system. It's for our fleet management. They don't, the system itself, they don't offer specific, they only offer APIs. They don't help out with the integrations. So a lot of those integrations are having to be built by internal staff. And so it's taking a lot more time to review those integration requirements, to map out those guidelines. And then staff is really taking a upfront approach and reviewing every single integration document that is output by the vendors. And that's what the risk was, is the sign off. And so we're not only reviewing, but we're commenting. We're asking questions and we're opening it up to make sure that the integration is built thoroughly and what, what the district needs. And so the Fleeteo integration was the biggest one because, again, the system or the vendor doesn't offer integration assistance. So our in-house IT has been doing the building a lot on their own.
So you have data sitting in the fleet section.
Yes.
And you need to integrate that data in, over into.
Workday.
The Workday environment.
Correct.
And so it's the, it's the communication between those two that has to be resolved internally by IT staff.
Yes, sir, along with the Workday vendor. Because the Workday vendor does offer support from the integrations on their, their portal. And IT staff is building the integration from the Fleeteo to the Workday portal.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I turn it over to Matt?
Good job, Sammy.
I'll be back.
Morning, Matt.
Morning. Morning, President Powell, members of the Board. I'm here to present the quarterly update for the Sprite Point implementation. It's our utility billing system. The following slides depict a project summary that outlines several milestones and deliverables that have been completed over the past few months. The milestones include integrations, what we just touched on. But for GIS, customer billing systems for RTL and OPEX, as well as the extraction and configuration of Naveon data in the Sprite Point platform. The risk here, the top right of the screen identified in yellow, highlights the gap between the number of reports requested by CBWD and what can be feasibly produced based on available resources. To mitigate this risk, staff will be having sessions with Sprite Point in November to evaluate the reports that were requested. And then we're also going to be, where possible, we'll look to consolidate reports, create reports in both Sprite Point and Workday and enable staff to generate their own reports to manage any, you know, any risks that might come up from this. Part of the issue now is that Naveon does not have a robust reporting system. So staff have to turn to an external report writing tool called Cognos. And so converting some of those reports over, we have like two hundred ninety that we requested. We want to get that number down to like one forty. There's also an issue identified in yellow just under the risk up there. It calls out the need to align on the scope for the land management enhancement. Sprite Point has worked with Hassan. Currently, they're working with their development team to provide an initial business requirements document that CBWD staff are currently reviewing in an effort to reconcile this issue. Additionally, later today, they'll be conducting a demonstration of their proof of concept for the land management enhancement. And we'll be working, and we'll be working towards reconciling expectation and alignment issues over the coming weeks. So after the demo and review of that document, hopefully we gain alignment on what the scope is. This slide here just has a couple more milestones from September. On this slide, we can see a summary of recent accomplishments and upcoming activities for the Sprite Point implementation. CBWD staff and Sprite Point continue to work through several phases in parallel with the analysis phase sitting at eighty five percent complete, configuration at sixty three percent, and testing and training at fourteen percent. Staff are still working diligently on all aspects of the implementation. Staff are still working diligently on all aspects of the implementation with participation from multiple departments within the district. It is important to recognize that thus far, the focus has been on domestic billing as SpritePoint works to develop enhancements that will allow staff to perform other billing activities such as RAC, Canal, Annual Tax Rule, IWAA, among others. We do expect broader engagement as some of these enhancements come online in the coming months and more cross-functional work between departments before go-live.
Is the board gonna get a preview of what the domestic bill would look like?
I do have a copy of what they came up with, what we submitted to them. Yeah. I could pass that around.
We previously previewed that with the board, though.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
You may not have been.
He might have been absent, but I did, they incorporated the tiers on the back of the bill, so you guys could take a look at that. One of the accomplishments on this slide that I would like to call out is the completion of the first round of bill validation for domestic accounts. For this round of bill validation, SpritePoint set a minimum threshold of 50% accuracy. I am happy to report we were able to achieve 72% accuracy. The reconciliation of billing accuracy between Navaline, what it currently generates, and SpritePoint this early in the implementation is pivotal to ensure issues can be identified and resolved as we work towards go-live in September of '26. I'll note here that we are gonna be reviewing the next round of bill validation October 30th, so a couple days. Before I pass this back to Sammy, I'll pause here to answer any questions.
I'd just like to make a comment. We had a number of Sky Valley residents here singing the praises of CVWD for the professionalism that they do. And, and that there was another water district that they saw that had a number of missed billings and so forth. So it's, I appreciate this work because we're all, we're striving and I see that you're striving to get, you know, that 100% accuracy on domestic bills. And so I admire that goal and I appreciate the work that you all are doing because, you know, the, the district's reputation depends on you.
Yeah, for sure.
And, and so, good for you for, you know, doing this work diligently and looks like with a lot of efficiency too. So, thank you.
So you're not gonna start from, from zero again as a homeowner. You're, you're gonna have the customers' information correct? So you'll have last year's, you know, October numbers. You'll, you'll, you'll be able to see how much you paid last month, how much your bill was last month, and all that stuff.
Yeah, they're bringing in three years of information that will be available in the UI.
Three years, okay.
Three years. They'll have an archive dataset that has less visualization. It's just kind of like tables. And I think that's going back, Luis, 10? Five or 10?
On, on the bill?
No, not on the bill. Just overall for. Yeah, they'll have the consumption history graph, yeah. Yeah, two years, consumption. Similar to what it is now.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Super helpful.
The archived data will be available to staff or to clarify anything with the customers if they have any questions. So that's not going away.
Yeah, the archived data is more for staff to answer questions for, that customers might have about previous bills, three years ago, or even back 10 years.
But a customer could come in and say, hey, how much, how much, what's the history of my account? I really need to know for these reasons, and you could give it to them, right?
Yep, yep. I got it.
Thanks, Matt.
No problem. I'll pass this back to Sammy.
Oh, boy, that was quick.
So the project budget. The project budget is currently on track. The line item that you'll see that is listed as over, it's not necessarily over. It just appears it's over. It's more, we need to reshift budgeted labor costs from the departments over to the capitalization project. So it's more of a fund shift than an increase in total spending. In conclusion, the overall program is in green status. The Workday project is currently in the architect and configure stage and is progressing on track. The SpritePoint project is currently in the analyses and Configuration testing phases and progressing on track. With that, I will, I'm done unless you guys have any questions.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. So one thing that I wanna point out is that the additional month that we're adding towards the end of the project is to allow us more testing. And the board will have information about how that's going. We do that already when we, you know, make changes to the rates. There's a mock-up bill that goes out. We have a lot of data to ensure that future bills match historical billing. And so we're taking all those steps to ensure that's the case. Obviously, we don't, we only know what we know, right? But we are taking all those steps to ensure that there's no impact to the customer. As it relates to the integrations as well, Director Nelson, is that there's a lot of processes that are changing, right? So we need to get consensus from the different business units, the departments, to ensure that those new processes that are changing with the new systems are meeting their business needs. So that's also creates an issue and delays the integrations. Case in point is, there's a lot of work right now being done with NextGen and Workday. NextGen is our asset management system, and there's a lot, it's one of our more complex integrations. There's a lot of feedback from Dan Charlton and his team, from finance, from IT, from the vendors. So some of them, they have three ways. So they talk to NextGen, they talk to Fleeteo, they go back to Workday. Some of them go back to the billing system. So because we don't have a typical ERP with, you know, one solution provides everything, we are making it work with other systems. And so there's a lot of testing, a lot of consensus, a lot of reviews that happen, which inadvertently, you know, our job is to be safe, then rush it and get approvals, and that's what we're doing. So. Any other questions?
So I just have a question on this. I'm looking at this. So I personally like to look at the CCFs that I did last year on the same month compared to this year. And so you do have that, but it's in a graph. But on the current bill, right now, you have it in a number. You have numbers. You have the exact numbers, and I'm not seeing that on this.
Right, right here? Is that what you're talking about?
No, it's got, it's got a couple of.
You're talking about the CCF for like previous year or previous month?
Same month, last month.
Same month last year.
Same month last year, and you, and you have it, you have it on my bill. I was just looking at it. I mean, you've got three or four of the last months plus the following year.
So this, this bill that you're seeing is just a mock-up from CVWD that we provided to the vendor. I could still give them that feedback if you'd like to see that and see what they can do for us. Because this isn't the official drafted bill from SpritePoint. This is just what CVWD staff mocked up for.
I mean, if you're watering your monitor, your water, I think it's important to see exact numbers. You know, I was at 200 and, and the same month last year, I was at 150.
200.
That comparison you over here.
We also do water waste reviews.
My last comment is that a couple of weeks ago, we had an open house for all employees to get up to speed on how, what we're doing. We had a great turnout. Our job is to make sure all employees understand where we're going, where we are in the process. And I wanna recognize all the employees, all the staff, our leadership from the general manager, the executive team, because this takes an amount, you know, an extensive amount of effort. And everybody's pulling together and our, our project managers, our workstream leads, everybody, there's a ton of staff. Over 150 employees are directly involved in this. But again, we are disseminating this information, so everybody has an opportunity to provide feedback. We have information throughout the digital displays. And again, we're spreading the communication so everybody knows what's happening. Thank you also to the board for the support, and I'm sure we'll come back at some time to give another update and hopefully address your questions and concerns. Thank you.
You know, one, one other thing, Luis.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I like everything here, but that's not what that is, I don't think. But I was thinking, you know, I'm seeing a lot more QR codes out there.
Okay.
Where you can, you know, that I could use my camera on my phone to do the QR code and it'll take me into my customer account.
Okay, we'll look at that as well.
Just saying, it's a really nice way to go, especially as people's, you know, vision starts.
And our new customer portal, we will have a nice, helpful, useful customer portal now. It will be modern, that I think it would be very helpful. So that's a good idea. We'll definitely consider that.
If you had a paper bill and you could just click the QR code, it'd take you right in there. That would be, I, I don't know if it could be customer-specific, but it.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that.
We can get you to a place. I don't know that we can go 110,000.
Get you to the front door but not into your own account, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I've, I've had, I've found that to be, you see a lot more of it now, and I use it a lot, and it really works great.
We also use it internally for a lot of our communications, and I will, we'll consider that for that. Thank you.
Thanks.
I wanna just echo the comments that Luis made. This is a huge undertaking for the district in addition to doing the regular day-to-day operations. It's the leadership of Luis and Carla and Scott Barrett, supported by Sammy and Matt, and as, as Luis said, quite a few of the other employees. It is disruptive, but it is extremely important that we get this right. And that's one of the things I continue to emphasize. Most of the problems tend to come on the customer billing side when we go live. So I feel very confident that they are spending the right amount of time getting that done. But it is, it is a huge undertaking. I'm very appreciative of the efforts that staff is putting forward on making this work. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it took them two years to even convince you, or four.
Hard sell, sir, hard sell.
He's trying to get it, trying to run out the clock and get retired before this happens.
He was, he was. Damn, missed that.
Good. All right. Onto board comments. Director Nelson.
Yeah, I just have one comment this morning, and it's not a very positive one, but I'll try and make it as positive as possible. I, I attended the first public meeting of the GSA update here, and it was in this room. And it was something that was put on by the contractor in connection with CVWD. Quite honestly, it's Todd Groundwater, I think, is doing it. Quite honestly, the, the mics didn't work, the Zoom didn't work, the feedback was horrible. And I just thought that, that, that wasn't a good way to go out and reach the public. Now, granted, there was no public here. It was, it was all agencies.
Understood.
So that, that's, that's all it had. So, you know, I'd like to see improvement in that area.
We've taken that.
So we've looked into that and we, staff has identified a couple of issues. Some are internal, some were just others involved. And we are creating a different checklist so that departments know exactly what steps they have to have. Because putting a meeting together, you can't just walk in. There's a lot of preparation that comes into that.
Right, you have a, you have a control board back there.
Exactly. Staff has to make sure to, you know, manage that and incorporate time to notify IS, notify the clerk's office and do that. So we are looking at that and creating kind of different steps and checklists to ensure that folks that use this are prepared to have public meetings and that they go as smooth as possible. Even our meetings sometimes have hiccups.
Yeah, yeah, we have feedback here and there.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that response.
Absolutely.
Yeah, fair comment. Director Aguilar?
Again, just wanna say thank you for the vote of confidence on the conservancy. Thank you, Director Aguilar. Looking forward to it. Just wanna say thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being willing to do it, because it's a big commitment. All right, so when I was little, I was never a Boy Scout, but I was a Cub Scout, and I think they, their motto was be prepared. So this, this guy, I'm a big Dodger fan. I've never heard of Will Klein. I don't know who the heck that is. He looks like Justin Turner's brother.
I've heard of him.
You have heard of him?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know who that guy is. I saw him and I'm like, where'd they find that guy? But he woke up yesterday. He never in his wildest dreams thought he'd be pitching in the World Series. But he was prepared, and he was one of the finest pitching outings I've ever seen. Four innings, no, no runs. It's nice to see Kershaw also out there, but he's Kershaw. This guy, nobody's, I've never heard of. And, and he, he saved, I think he saved the Dodgers' season. I really do.
Oh, they were gonna win no matter what.
No, 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 no. Their, their bullpen is shaky. They're talking about putting a position player in. Anyways, my point is, my point is, you know, you don't know what's gonna happen.
Don't act like you're the underdog. Come on.
You don't know, you don't know what the day, you don't know what's gonna unfold on, on your day, right? It's not about the Dodgers. That's not my point. My point is. My point is, my point is be prepared. Be prepared, right?
True.
I mean, he was prepared regardless. His odds of going in were zero. Anyways, I was very impressed.
He was not even going to be on the roster except for a family emergency of one of the other.
That's right.
It's amazing.
And he's thrown 98, and he, I mean, it was really a sight to behold.
So does this mean this guy's gonna become the new thing, though, you think?
Well, you know, they.
See if he gets in again, if they're in the same position.
It'll be interesting to see, it'll be interesting to see if he comes back in this year and if he's even on the team next year.
Because earlier in the year, he had no control. He has a, he has a great fastball. He has some action on it, and he couldn't control it. He had all the tools. He just couldn't control it. And he came in last night and controlled every pitch.
It was beautiful.
It wouldn't have been so beautiful if they lost.
It's not about, it's not about.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't have never heard of Klein if they had lost last night. Never had this conversation.
Anyways, be prepared. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, good message, good message.
Should we provide equal time for the Toronto fans?
So by the way, I was there in 2018, game three, when we went 18 innings, but which, which is still the lo, on the clock, the longest.
Yeah, yeah, because there's no pitch clock.
Yeah, because it was a little longer game. My legs were so sore. I mean, we stood up and clapped so many times, you know. Probably once you got into the 10th inning, 80% of the people were still there and nobody left, you know. But, but that was, so we still have the record as the longest World Series game, but it got real close last night. Yeah, it was pretty fun. All right. Any requests for future agenda items? I should say it got close this morning.
Yeah.
Because it was today. Onto board meeting reports, September 25th. Director Estrada, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I had reported on the, I think the actual meeting that we had with Leadership Council that went well and had forgotten to put this on the agenda for preparation that we had in preparation for that meeting with Kerry and Jim and other staff. But that, it was a prep, a prep meeting.
Okay, great. October 15th, Director Nelson?
Oh, yeah, we had a CRB meeting in Laverne at the Weymouth Water Treatment Plant of Metropolitan. It was attended very well. We had Devin Upquay there, GM of Metropolitan, as well as the chairman, Donna Ortega, who outlined some specific goals of Metropolitan in the 2026 negotiations, which were interesting. Avoid litigation and be active in creating solutions. So. That's, I can, I'll express more.
Yeah, those are good comments.
And then we also had our Six Agency Committee. Right afterwards, we approved the last payment of the calendar year or last invoicing out to the agencies to support the Colorado report. I can take the next one.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, obviously the study session, we, we don't need a report on, and then.
I'll start this one. John Aguilar and myself met with Mission Springs Water District in a two-by-two meeting. Jim was there. I thought it was productive. I thought it was good to put goals and objectives out on the road, out on the table. It really did concern the ID-8 system up in Sky Valley and then through. uh, out on the table, it really did, uh, concern the ID eight system, uh, up in Sky Valley and then through, uh, Desert Hot Springs. Um, uh, there were some, uh, go-forward, uh, plans to get Mission and, uh, Desert Hot Springs to talk to each other, and, um, that was about it.
Yeah, no, I think that's a, I think that's a good summary. It was Chairman Ivan Sewell and their Vice Chairman Robert Griffith, uh, plus Brian Racy, so, yeah, I think it was productive.
Good, yeah, appreciate that, guys. Uh, and then, uh, go ahead with the next one.
Oh, yeah, oh, here we go, um, the city of Indio had their State of the City, uh, as this is the season for these. Um, and, uh, they, uh, uh, they did a good job, big loud band, uh, in the beginning, uh, you couldn't hear each other network, but, uh, uh, it was, uh, it was good to see a lot of Indian people, and, um, you know, they're doing a lot of things. Indio, uh, has a lot of things going, that's for sure. As well as does Coachella, but, uh.
No, India, India's going fast.
Yeah, they are, they are grow, they are growing like angusters, it's unbelievable.
Well, they have a JPA with that.
Well, they have JPA.
Substations, baby, alright. Where are we on this?
Oh, gosh, I have the, I have the next one too. Um, Colorado River, uh, policy discussion with Assemblyman, uh, Jeff Gonzalez, as you know, he's in, uh, a part of the Colorado River forum, uh, forum, where state legislators come together from, uh, this, uh, upper and lower basin, uh, the, from the state perspective and talk to each other, so updated him about the ongoing negotiations. Jim was there.
Good, thank you. Yeah, that's important. Uh, October twenty-second, golf and water.
That got canceled.
It got canceled? Then twenty-third, Coachella State of the City. That was, um, Peter was there, and I was there.
I was there.
You were there, and, yeah. Jim was there.
Yeah, so you can add two, two to that, John and myself.
Yeah, okay.
Open, it's open seating, we were in the back.
Yeah.
But that's fine.
That is open.
We could leave early.
Okay.
Oh, I'm, you put me down on that, okay.
I think we can get a table next year for the Coachella one.
Yeah, probably so.
Yeah, probably so. Although people who bought tables were still in the back, so.
Yes.
True.
I think part of it is, is how quickly you register, I think they start, um, because that's some of the things I've asked is, you know, how does it happen, and so as you're registering, they kind of start, and of course, I'm sure they have their.
We know some people, we might be able to pull some strings.
Yeah, alright. So growing, growing Coachella Valley, got nonprofit of the year.
Well, they, they did, tutor.
Um, which I'm, which I'm part of, and, uh, pre- pretty proud of that, um. And, uh, they, they did it, Sydney Coachella did a good job of, of what, what's gone on the last year and what's, what's coming up, so. They did a really good job, it's a nice setting there.
Yeah, George did a good job talking about the things that that organization does to support the community.
Yeah, it's grown a lot, it's been really good.
Good.
And, and you, you have your Ag Vision coming up.
You have Ag Vision coming up, that's correct, that's, uh, yeah, next, two weeks. Two weeks from Thursday, I think.
Yeah, looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Um, then I had the Farm Water Coalition meeting yesterday, um, we made a selection of our Executive Director, which will be announced in November thirteenth about, so, um, uh, and went over, uh, general funding issues and, uh, membership, uh, thoughts, so, that was it.
Salt and Sea Authority on the twenty-seventh?
Uh, so, um, yeah, so we had scheduled yesterday a, uh, strategic planning session with CB Strategies that's been in the books for several months, and, uh, we could barely get a quorum. So attendance was questionable to begin with, but we did have some folks show up, VP Estrada showed up, which is great. And I would have to say that the results of the session were kind of mixed. The, uh, the tenor of the meeting to begin with, particularly with comments from Supervisor Perez, and, um, and the, uh, and the President regarding the future of the authority were not very optimistic. And, but through, um, through more discussion and more information presented, particularly in the feasibility study, how critical that was, um, I think there was a sense at the end of the meeting, of the session, that, um, that there may be, uh, some valid reasons to continue the mission of the, uh, of the authority.
Yeah, so, uh, a great, great summary, I, I was there too, and, uh, I, I think that was the big elephant in the room, and I'm, I'm glad that Supervisor Perez kind of put it out there so quickly, cuz it, uh, really got the conversation going, and, and I think it made us think about um, the reasons why the authority should exist or continue to exist, and the one thing that seemed to stand out as, as that reason was the feasibility study with the Army Corps of Engineers. That's something that has been worked on for a very, very long time, probably, you know, since back in, you know, like twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen. And it's been quite successful, um, what we've been able to do there, uh, we have a, a mega, uh, study, um, which I'm hearing is probably around how many millions of dollars, it's more than tens.
Yeah, twenty.
It's twenty, and, um, um, the state is, is, is in for like about eleven of that. Um, it sounds like they've committed all of their contribution minus their in-kind, which is a total of about nine million, ten million. Um, the in-kind will come in, in way of in-kind over the next several years. And so, it's a, it's a, it's a big accomplishment, and I think that what we've all kind of agreed on is that for the sake of having that study complete, um, the authority should continue to exist, even if it's for a short duration, but, but it is, uh, a, a big of enough, um, kind of a goal that, that we're trying to hit. It's, uh, something that we've, that we've never, that we've never done before, it, it's a big thing, and it, the, the study would allow for, um, for the Salt and Sea to, uh, you know, put their hands on, on some federal funding for, uh, uh, up to sixty-five percent of a project. And so when you think about even the state's year, uh, the, the state's tenure plan, you know, that has, uh, probably about a, a billion-dollar tag price to that. There's other projects out there that have been floated around even since, uh, the time of, uh, Supervisor Benoit. The Lake Perimeter Project, and that also had about a billion-dollar price tag to it. So when you think about the cost of those projects, and the idea that you can get sixty-five percent of it, um, paid for by the federal government, then, you know, this type of application is very important, so. So I think we all understood that, and so we, uh, I think we have some commitments to try to get that done. That'll carry us at a minimum till about twenty thirty, when the, um, whole thing is supposed to conclude, so. Um, we also had some conversations on governance. We wanna think about how to better engage, uh, as, as, uh, uh, board members of the authority. But we also were pretty honest about our feelings about the conservancy, our, our kind of concern and confusion as to what role the conservancy's gonna play, what role the Salt and Sea Authority's gonna play, and just trying to have a better sense of what those things are. Also wanted to get more, more feedback from the state as to what they kind of see the authority doing moving forward in the conservancy, I think, um, what we wouldn't want is for the state to all of a sudden kind of maybe put their entire focus on the conservancy and in a way, put the authority to the side, and if that's what they plan to do, then they should say that, they should say that, so that we know what we need to do, so. Um, it went, it went okay, uh, I'm glad we had it. And I'm expecting that we're gonna have more of these types of conversations on the dais, and, um, I think they're healthy, so.
So, Tusslo, I, I, I listened in to the meeting, and, uh, since it was on a Zoom platform, and uh, you mentioned twenty thirty, but the thing I got from your Executive Director, uh, O'Dowd, was that the feasibility study should wrap up in twenty twenty-seven, uh, with, um, a range of alternatives as to what is, I guess, possible at the, at the sea, and it doesn't necess- it wouldn't necessarily, you know, be a plan, an executable plan, but, you know, the, the plan that's out there that everyone could work for. So, i- it seems to me like the authority, and I agree with you, the authority should be in place to help shepherd that process through in order to get the, uh, Army Corps feasibility study done, uh, and, you know, have local contacts and be involved, uh, with the intermediary, with the state, in terms of the state is, I, I guess, supplying probably a lot of data and information as well. So, uh, with the authority involved in that realm, it seems really important. At the end of the day, and I had to leave early, but at the end of the day, did, did the different uh, organizations of the JPA commit to shepherding through the, the feasibility study timeframe through that twenty twenty-seven?
This, the supervisor who was the one that brought up the, kind of the, the topic, um, before he left, he, he said he was on board.
Okay.
He said that he felt that getting through the study was, um, was important, so uh, I, I think, uh, I mean, I didn't hear any, like, specific commitments, or, you know, we didn't take roll call, like, like that. But, but I felt that out of the conversation, that, the general consensus was that the study was important.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping that, um, that when we report back on the, you know, when we have a, a Salt and Sea Authority meeting, I think we'll continue to have those conversations, and eventually those, those will have to materialize in some type of answer.
Because I see it as, as the Bureau and Interior are somewhat separate from the sea, they have water, uh, management obligations and, uh, attending to the drought and so forth, and really, available supplies, I mean, it's not like there's, there's gonna be a program to cut the sea because, you know, the sea's, you know, got a water right or something, which it doesn't, but, I mean, the, they're dealing with the drought, right? And so, it seems to me like the Army Corps is the nexus between the land that's owned by the federal government in the agricultural drainage area, and, and the Army Corps, you know, has an obligation to represent the, the landowner who's the federal government. And so, uh, it seems to me like that, that shepherding of that process, uh, with the, with the authority, it would be really important to get to that twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll, uh, I'll share the, the agreement that's in place with the Army Corps that has the schedule on how the feasibility study is to be complete over the next years. And it does go to twenty thirty, um, twenty twenty-seven is a, is a benchmark in that, where, as you mentioned, the options are being dwindled down. And you've heard that Patrick said that right now, there's probably four of them that are probably the top contenders. And the hope is that by twenty twenty-seven, the one that will continue to move forward is identified. But I think there's still some things that would have to happen after that that carries you to twenty thirty. Um, I don't remember the specifics of what those things are, but that agreement does go to twenty thirty, is my, my understanding, so. So, um, I, I, I'll find the agreement, and I'll, and I'll share it with the board.
Okay.
So you, so you guys can see it.
Yeah, I mean, and as, as far as funding, I mean, we're supporting the authority two hundred thousand dollars a year, and, you know, up to twenty thirty's a million bucks, right? And so, that, that's real money. And, uh, uh, you know, I don't know if we still have any of the money available from the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act, uh, the million dollars.
Maybe that's where that goes.
Maybe that's where that goes, in terms of our, our support for the sea. Uh, you know, i- if you recall, uh, with the, um, um, with the Bucket One, Bucket Two, um, uh, and the money that came, uh, with the conservation, there was also a million dollars set aside for CBWD to support a staff member. Um, and if we're, if we can use that money to support the Salt and Sea Authority, it seems to me like a good use of.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, and, uh, I'll just, uh, say that, uh, what was I gonna say? Um, well, we did, we did throw out their, the idea to the state that they should also use the money that's been created by Prop Four to try to sustain the authority.
Right.
Um, and, uh.
And, and it seems to me that, uh, that IID would be in a similar position, I mean, I can't talk for them, but, but, I mean, we're receiving a million, and I believe they, they received two million dollars.
I think it was four.
Uh, I thought it was two, but maybe if it's four, all the better, right? So, I, I, in, in terms of, of, you know, trying to get that feasibility study across the line.
Uh, yeah, I think it's important, and but, uh, yeah, that, that was mostly the conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Thanks, guys. Any other meetings we need to report on? No? Uh, is there a motion approved per diem for the meetings, the report?
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass five oh, General Manager.
I have nothing this morning, sir.
Just real briefly, uh, SB three-nine-four was passed and signed by the Governor, goes into effect the first of the year. It adds some penalty options for water theft. Water theft is tampering with the meter, putting up an additional connection past the meter, and, and I, also tampering with fire hydrants, that's the new part of the law, it adds some additional penalties for that. And I'll be working with staff to make sure that our rules and regs reflect those options. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, sir, not this morning.
Right. Uh, uh, at this time, the Board will recess in the closed session to consider the items listed on the agenda. Following closed session, we will reconvene to report out. Alright, so, uh, we're, we're reconvene in the regular meeting, and we do not have any reportable action from closed session, and with no further business, we are adjourned.